Okay, whenever you're ready.
All right, I'd like to call to order the April 20, 2021, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please, call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Peter Piffco. Peter Piffco.
Present.
There we go.
Deborah Range.
Present.
Andres Paradello.
Here.
Mark Payton.
Here.
John Hicksonbaugh.
Here.
All right, Ms. White, would you please reallow the COVID-19 protocols we are following?
Pursuant to Mayor Keith A. James's executive order number 2020-05 issued on April 2nd, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14th, 2020, Mayor Keith A. James issued Executive Order Number 2020-09, which specifically provides the rules of procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi-digital hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this public hearing, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission Chambers, located at City Center or 01 Clementa Street, on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including WPB, TV18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following. Number one, in the city center, Flagler Gallery. Number two, dialing 561-320-6451, and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Number three, sending an email or video recording to or four, completing the online public comment form at www.wp.org/publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q&amp;A or raise hand features. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you are about to provide testimony and were not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn in before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation, and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. For members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable, and you are not and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting. End of statement.
All right, thank you so much. The next order of business is approval of the March 16, 2021 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Any changes or corrections? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve. And look, and look.
Approval.
Motion for approval, have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All, okay, no one in opposition. All right, next on the agenda is report of the planning staff.
Evening Chair and Board Members, Angelo Van, planning his own administrator. Let me share my screen. So I don't have one screen, oh God. Quick update of the cases that's been here since your last planning board meeting in March. City Commission approved the following case on March 22nd, and planning board approved it at the January 19, 2021, meeting by a 7-0 vote. And that was a city-initiated amendment to the dock regulations, and it was just to basically allow us to be consistent with what state statutes have recently changed. The next item, the City Commission approved at the April 5, 2021, meeting, and you approved it on your February 16, 21, meeting by a 6-0 vote. And this was for the Flamingo Car Wash, which is located in we've got a Beverly Road, Palm Way, Gateway, CPD. This is where the Wawa is currently located, you've got the Mississippi dealership. This is a self-storage facility. So Commission did approve the Flamingo Car Wash. That concludes staff presentations of the items that have been approved since the planning board meeting in March. Any questions?
Any questions of staff? All right, thank you, Ms. Van. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. That brings us to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That will bring us then to Planning Board Case Numbers 1824, 1824A, and 1824B.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if you just give me one second, I will bring everybody in.
Okay.
Okay, that should be everybody.
All right, would anyone who plans or wishes to offer testimony this evening, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
They do.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll begin with the applicant. Is that you, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board Members, thank you for having us this evening. Yes, same with you, looking forward to getting back to in person, but we'll make do. Thank you, Mr. Roach, for running this so professionally as the moderator. So let me make sure I can share screen. And, okay, so can everyone see the PowerPoint?
We can.
Okay, so, and I just wanted to introduce, I saw we have some other folks as part of the team. We have Tim Flowers, who is the executive pastor. I think, I'm not sure if Reg O'Connor, he's one of the elders, as well as Craig Colhore is one of the elders. We also have Jeff Robinson, lead pastor. And on the rest of the consultant team, we have Matthew Kahn with Caulfield and Wheeler on Civil, and Andrea Troutman from Pinder Troutman for traffic. And again, my name is Josh Nichols with Schmidt Nichols, and we are representing Grace Fellowship for, this is annexation, future land use amendment, and rezoning. So, go to just again, our table of contents, where we'll be going. So just to kind of orient you with the site, this is at the kind of the western boundary of the city of West Palm Beach. You have the Belavita Project to our east, we're on the south side of Okeechobee. This is the Grace Fellowship and Breen Private School. So many of you probably are familiar with this. It's about 27.44 acres. We're currently in unincorporated Palm Beach County, thus asking for the annexation, so we'll kind of go into some of those details. Current zoning and flu are commercial within the county, and our current and existing land uses and as moving forward is a place of worship, a private school, and daycare. So those uses are existing and would continue. So there you can see existing city of West Palm Beach municipal bounds. And just a close-up view, so you can see Belavita to the east, and we are the two parcels to the west there in the red. So just to give you a little bit of background, so in 1964, Breen Baptist Temple was actually part of West Palm Beach. So this is kind of a coming home request here. So they were right on 4200 North Australian at the corner of 45th and Australian Boulevard. 1985, they did purchase the property out where we were talking about 8350 Okeechobee. The church and the school then moved from Australian to the subject site. In 1994, the school reached their capacity and had, was kind of forced to develop some temporary classroom portables. Sadly enough, they are still there, and that's one of the main reasons why we are hoping to come into the city, get our phases moved forward so we can get these portables out of the, out of the system here, because they are 30-plus years old. 2000, the current Worship Center was constructed. The name changed to Grace Fellowship in early 2000s, and the gym building is, has been completed as of 2005 in the history line. May 2012, Grace Fellowship purchased that property in the east that we were talking about, which again, provides that contiguity that's required for annexation. So again, first request, so when you're coming into the city, this is a voluntary annexation. When we're coming in from the county, we are required to change and designate a future land use designation for the property. So currently, we are institutional with underlying low residential one on approximately 18.38 acres. And then on the eastern property that was recently purchased, it's high residential eight units per acre on approximately nine acres. We are proposing to change that to the City of West Palm Beach Community Service land use designation, as well as City of West Palm Beach Commercial on approximately 2.93 acres. So you'll see how that fits in the, in the graphics that I'll show you. And again, so as part of the annexation, you have to designate the future land use, and then the last tier is the rezoning. So the rezoning is from residential, single-family over the entire property to City of West Palm Beach Commercial, Community Service, which again, jives with the Community Service land use, and then general commercial for the commercial portion that I'll show you in a second. So here's the existing, so you can see as part of the, that would be the area annexed, and you can see West Palm is the light white shade, and so we would be adding to that, and that shows our contiguity across to the north, as well as to the east. This is the existing future land use, so you can see the institutional and then the HR8. We are proposing to change that to entirely Community Service on the west parcel, and then a small amount of commercial. As you can see, it kind of ties in with the rest of the commercial on the corridor. And again, we're not proposing a site plan at this phase of the project. This is simply the annexation, the land use and the zoning. As you can see, here's the existing zoning designation, which is RS in the, in unincorporated county. And we are proposing that consistent CS, West Palm, and the general commercial in the corner. So while I said we're not, we're not in for site plan right now, I did want to give you kind of an idea of what the proposal consists of. So everything that's in the lighter shaded gray is, that's all existing right now. So if you were to go out to the site, that's what you would see. What we are adding in Phase One is a parking area. They, the Grace Fellowship Church is running about seven services, if not more, every Sunday, and there's a, there's a need for additional parking. And so they're expanding, they're growing, which is a good thing. And so you also see parking and a two-story multi-use building to the south side of the sanctuary. That's part of Phase One. So that's going to loosen up some areas so that they can get some of those portables out of there. It's also for Sunday school and for offices that are in the church. So that's Phase One. Phase Two would be a three-story school building, and that will get rid of all of those 30-plus-year-old portables that are falling apart, and that will be the new school building. It's actually situated behind a two-story gym and other classroom, classrooms there to the west. So that's Phase Two. Phase Three is actually in that parking area that I talked about that was added at the south side of the sanctuary. That's currently their, their quote-unquote athletic fields. Those athletic fields would be relocated over to where you see the Phase Three, and that would be a future fieldhouse down the road. But in the more immediate future, will be fields and ball fields, baseball field, that type of thing. So that, they need more space as the school's growing. Phase Four is a daycare expansion. So again, they currently have a daycare, but that would be a daycare expansion. Again, that's in a future Phase Four. And then we have that, as I was talking about, that commercial kind of out parcel that's about three acres, and that would be for a potential hotel. There's no hotels out in this portion of Okeechobee. There's only about four hotels within about a five-mile range, so there's a real need out here. It would not only help the church, because they do have people that come internationally and nationally into the church, but it would also help this part of the county for, you know, the, there's a lot of rooftops around here, so relatives coming into the area and stuff, so. Additionally, when they're having an issue on-site with the traffic stacking, because we don't have a dedicated right. So as you can see, the aerial that we show there is a dedicated left and then a through and a right. Well, what happens is if one person is trying to go straight over to Andrew's aisle, you're blocking all those rights. So as part of our Phase One application and request, we will be upgrading that access in that entrance to have a dedicated left, a through, and a dedicated right. So that will really relieve the on-site traffic flow quite a bit. So again, that's really the extent of the site plan items. We're going to have to come back in through for site plan approval for those specific phases. But I just wanted to give you an idea of where we were going with our request. So again, this is more required as part of the state statutes. And again, why we wanted to come into the city is we want to have a predictable permitting process, which we can't really find at the county. There's also faster emergency response times. There happens to be a West Palm Beach Fire Station catty corner to the property. So that helps especially with the school and with church facility. We don't want the kids, you know, waiting for emergency response. So that's a big, that's a big plus as well. Per the state statutes, we have to be contiguous, so I showed you that boundary to the east and to the north. 60% of the property boundary should be adjacent, and we do meet those, those requirements for the contiguity. Again, we are voluntary annexation. You know, these, they are contiguous to municipal boundaries. And again, the, one of the state requirements is that the land shall not be annexed if it creates enclaves. So as I showed on the mapping, that this is not an enclave, and it's actually in the city's future annexation area. So it is, it is something that was deemed moving forward that the city would expand this way. Moving into the second request, this is for the Future Land Use Plan Amendment. We went through those details of the change from institutional and HR8 to the city's community service. We have a restriction on our daily trips to approximately 10,400 total daily trips. The actual uses as proposed are only about 5,000, and the current trips are at about 4,000. So there's about a 1,000 trip increase. We have 10,000 in there, because again, this is at the comp plan level. We don't want to have to come back if there is a change to the development program down the line. You don't want to keep coming back for changes to the comp plan for traffic. So that was our kind of self-limiting 10,000 total daily trips, even though we're, we're not close to that right now. Change assumptions, again, the big, the big main change assumption for the comp plan change is that we have to have a designation when we come in with the annexation. The church is in need of parking, and they're growing congregation. And again, the school capacity is, is at their max. They need to get these folks out of, out of these portables that are falling apart and need proper athletic facilities so that they can, you know, nurture and go after additional, you know, athletics. Again, these are requirements in the comp plan. I won't go through these in great detail, but again, most of these are from the need that we have to, we have to designate a flu to, to the project, because it is coming in through annexation. I'll go to the next. So and then again, our third request is the rezoning side of it. The rezoning has eight standards as well. So, you know, are we consistent with the, with the elements of the comprehensive plan? Yes. And again, you'll hear this from, from staff, from Eric as well, has opined on, on all these items as well. So again, change conditions is the need for expansion. This church is doing very well, and we need, we need to provide that additional parking space. The school needs expansion space, and obviously, the athletic fields. Does it conform to code? Yes, we're meeting all the codes, and we will be meeting those codes moving forward with the site plan. Consistent with the existing and proposed land uses, again, we're, we're pretty much 80% built out, so it's really just getting everything caught up to the annexation. We do not exceed existing capacity for public facilities. We've got the traffic letter from the county that we do meet those requirements, as well as FDOT. We will need to request capacity for water sewer when we go through the site plan phase of this, but that's all part of the process. And it doesn't result in significant adverse impact. Again, the site's basically built out, so there's, there's really no impacts to the rezoning. Actually, we're, we're helping some of the impacts that we'll talk about with a neighbor that was objecting to, to the request, and we'll show you those items. So again, no adverse impact on property values. This is already the church use, the daycare, and the school. We are increasing, we're hopefully increasing it actually by including a general commercial node that's out, out on the frontage, and increasing those values and bringing in some needed commercial. Again, resulted, it does result in an orderly and logical development pattern along this corridor, and commercial is kind of what's expected along, along this corridor. So this is what I was talking about. We did have an appeal letter come from Marcy McMasters at 8552,000 Pines. She's in unincorporated Palm Beach County, just to the west of us. She sent in an email to the city. These were some of the bullet points, the highlights, the landscaping, maintenance noise, noise from children during recess, noise from bullhorns during sporting events and practice, and then noise occurring daily between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. So in our, in response to that, the glaring thing, I think, is that the school and the church in their current capacity were in operation 23 years prior to McMasters purchasing the home. So they, you know, kind of knew what she was getting into and buying that home and what their, their use was. The landscaping noise, she was saying that it happens on a daily basis. You know, there's a typical landscape program that they have for their maintenance, so, and it only happens during business hour, so we don't anticipate that there's any issue really there. One of the big issues, I think, is, was the, was the noise coming from children at recess and megaphones, because they do have, you know, some of their teams out there and stuff. So what I think we're doing inherently that will reduce this issue and actually eliminate it is that those sports fields, as I had talked, are moving about 700 feet away from those single-family homes. So the sports field at the southwest is being replaced with parking that's needed for the school, and then moved to the eastern side of the property. All of the, the parking that is proposed will meet all the lighting requirements, so we won't have any light spill, and we'll meet all the other standards of code. This is the area where we imagine that Ms. McMaster is talking about the noise coming from, and this is their athletic field right now. So again, this will be built out to parking, and we'll eliminate those issues of noise, and those sports fields get shifted over to the east. With that, I really appreciate the time. The team appreciates the time, we're here to answer any questions, and again, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chair, this is John. Just for the record, Mr. Thomas had some technical difficulty, so he's in the room with me. So if any questions arise for him, he can, he can be reached here.
All right, thank you for letting us know. Any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. Can we hear from staff? Mr. Snyder, is that you?
Yes, it is. Good evening, for the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. And I'm going to share my screen, which is so I put up the, I have a quick presentation, but it really covers everything that the applicant did, and so I, unless you really want me to, I'm not going to go through my presentation. I will hit some high points, though. I just wanted to point out, in case it wasn't clear from the applicant's presentation, we will be technically annexing a portion of Okeechobee Boulevard, and there's, it's actually a right-of-way. You can see on my screen the two squares that they have. There's actually a platted right-of-way between there, that comes into the city. And they technically get the zoning stretched to the midpoint of those roadways. So our boundary expands to include Okeechobee and that, and that gap between the two parcels. So, and that all meets state standards. One of the other things is that while the applicant did bring up and mention what they, they, their goal is to put a hotel on that commercial piece, by assigning it a commercial future land use and zoning designation, they are eligible to put any commercial use in there. And that really goes to why the, the lion's share of those trips are assigned to the commercial piece of the ones that they do have available, because that way, if the hotel doesn't work out, they can put in a CVS, or a McDonald's, or office building, or other commercial uses that are permitted that may have a higher traffic count use than the, than a hotel does. So that's, that's kind of why, in case you were wondering why that the, the ratio of trips were weighted towards the commercial piece. And that is the long-range, based on the long-range failure of Okeechobee Boulevard at the maximum traffic that they could have, which would be, i-if they could fully build out at the maximum intensity of the community service, and the commercial would be 36,000 trips, as opposed to the 10,000 that they can do. So that, that's where that number comes from. And then, just to clarify, the condition that they do need to provide the letter from Palm Beach County, that Water Utilities Division, that they are able to provide service for the maximum build-out under that 10,000 daily trips. And that's because Palm Beach County provides the water and sewer to this site and not the city of West Palm Beach. So we do have a letter from the applicant for a version of their specific build-out program, but as the applicant said, that is a lot less than what the maximum build-out can be. So we just need to make sure that we're, that the, the maximum build-out they could do on there meets everybody's service availability. Outside of that, the applicant covered the standards for the various applications. You know, staff has looked at them as well, you can look in your backup. You know, we're recommending approval of the future, of the annexation as it meets the Chapter 171 standards in the Florida statutes. All that backup material can be found in your, in your packet, page 18. The future land use, we're recommending approval with the conditions I mentioned about the providing the letter from the county and the specific limitations on the, the maximum development. And those meet the future land use element 1.1.5 requirements. That's on page 28 of your staff report. And then approval of the rezoning, which is, meets the standards for Chapter 9432, and that's on pages 34 and 35 of the staff report. If you have any questions of staff available, but the applicant did a great job of covering why they want it and the backup material on there.
All right, any questions of staff? And if not, John, do we have anyone for the public who wishes to be heard on this?
Yes, I actually have Marcy McMaster, who's indicated, and then additionally, someone has their hand raised. So let me bring Marcy in first.
Okay.
Okay, Marcy, you've been promoted to a panelist, so you should be able to turn on your audio and video.
And can you bring another one in as well, so we can spread them in at the same time?
Yes, let me bring in the other one, they just have their email address, one second. Okay, I've also brought in shwpbc@hotmail.com. They'll just need to unmute and turn on their video if they have it.
All right, so for the two who just joined us, if you can unmute and turn on your microphone, your camera rather, activate your camera, that'd be great. McMaster, are you there?
I am, can you hear us?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
I'm sorry about that, hold on.
There should be a camera icon in the bottom-left corner.
Show us her camera on, it's just maybe covered with
Oh, that's a good point, John.
I don't know. It's not covered, meaning.
Is it, is it possible it's facing the wrong way or something? We've seen that happen.
I, I'm sorry. I don't, just give me a moment. I'm sorry to take up your time. Can you see me now? No?
Not yet. I think it's a requirement too, that we have to be able to have the video to work. So let's see here. Who, who are the tech savvy people here? Give her some assistance. Not anyone jump in at once here? Are you sure there's not something as simple as, as a plastic cover or something?
I do not have a plastic cover over it. And actually, to be honest with you, I'm on this all day long for work, so I don't know what the problem is. I'm just going to be honest. I just don't know.
Do you have like a cellphone or something you could log in instead with?
Hang on one moment. Let me see if I think I might got it. I think. Nope.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can recommend you maybe hear the comments from the other gentleman and then she can reboot, maybe try again.
Okay, well, Ms. McMaster, can you hear me at least?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'd just swear you're both in at once, but then you need to re-log in. Will you both raise your right hand? You swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful.
Yes.
All right. And sir, can we have your name, please?
My name is Steve Hood.
Okay, if you could please proceed. And Ms. McMaster, you need to log off and try again. See if we get your.
All right. Sorry.
Okay.
I apologize for my email. It only asked me for that. It didn't ask me for the name, so.
Understood.
No, thank you guys. It's great to watch some of the banter going on. Fantastic meeting. Love to see the camaraderie. Thousand Pine resident since nineteen ninety-two. I moved in three days before Andrew, so you can imagine what kind of welcome I got into this neighborhood. Been on the board for many years. I'm on the ARB for the development as well. I was actually on the board when the church came before the, the county to put the church building in.
I can't do it.
Just wanted to comment that the churches, the church, the facilities there, the people, they've been fantastic neighbors. We, as a board member, ARB member through the years, never had any issues, but we think about neighbors to residential community. You can't think of anything better. I do hear the children's, children's laughter, some of the noise. I do hear some of the horns from time to time. The only thing that sometimes alerts us is the hurricane warnings we get, I'm sorry, the lightning warnings we get from time to time, but that's more safety. But just wanted to, to, to speak on, on the behalf of the church, the facilities, the the leadership there and recommend this as a, as a resident, not as a board member, not as an ARB member, as a resident. Do support all that they're, they're looking to do. I think that'll be a benefit to the community.
That's great.
To the city.
John, can you please, Ms. McMaster, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
And also to, to our neighborhood. I do think, understand Marcy's, you know, concern about some of the children's noise she does back up to that property. And certainly moving the kids to the other side will take care of a lot of that and really free up that, that kind of reduce that noise void for her. But just really want to speak on behalf of it and support of it as a resident, longtime resident, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you guys. I'll turn it over to Marcy and she can run from there.
Well, thank you so much, sir. Let me ask, thank you. Let me ask, Mr. Thomas, are we allowed to take testimony when the video's not working?
Mr. Chair, under the circumstances, I would suggest that we receive her testimony. Perhaps if she would be so kind as to send the letter confirming that she was present in person and we would ask the applicant if they would accept her testimonial, testimony without video.
I will send the letter if you can hear me. That's my part, I think you're asking.
Before you speak, we're waiting to hear from the applicant. Do you have any objection to her giving her testimony?
No, not at all. Please, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McMaster. You can go ahead and we're going to allow you. The rules normally require we have video. We're gonna, we're gonna suspend that here. We do ask that you send some written confirmation that you were here. Okay, go ahead and make your comments then.
I will, and I apologize for no video. I don't know what's wrong. I'm sorry. I'm gonna, my husband is here, Michael De Fontes. He's chosen to speak. I've already talked with them many, many times, sent emails, made a public comment. So go ahead, Michael.
Hi, guys. I would disagree with Josh Nichols in that the landscape work previous to maybe the last couple of months would start at six-thirty in the morning with those guys cutting tree limbs and leaf blowers and everything, five days a week or more. And we are right next to that, the, the existing parking lot and you're not here twenty-four seven like we are. We put up a, a privacy fence for a couple thousand bucks because at night, when they have services, the headlights are coming into our, our pool area. And when the services are over, kids park back there. They're smoking pot, drinking beer, they're throwing the trash over the fence. I don't know what is between our privacy fence and the chain link fence, because I haven't looked back there in a couple of years since we put it up. But I've gone to the headmaster several times, brought beer bottles and I just got tired of cleaning it up. I would call the police. And how do I know these kids are smoking pot? Because they're only fifty feet from our backyard and I have binoculars. And I, I asked the headmaster, I said, well, when the last guy leaves the church property, can't you put up a chain with a, a, a triangle so nobody, you know, runs into it and lock the property up at night? And this whole project is, is going to be crazy with traffic. We're going to go out of our minds. And yeah, you know, we knew that when we bought the house, that the church existed, but we didn't know that it was going to expand to this extent.
I, I bought the house, well, we bought the house in two thousand nine and it was not like that then. It, it escalated year by year as they've grown. So I have no problem with Bahrain in general or the church, Grace Fellowship, anything like that. This is not personal. Their agenda is to grow their congregation and to, you know, improve on their student body and to grow it. Their, their census. Mine is to enjoy my home. So we have conflicting views on our agendas and what we're looking for. As far as Steve Hood, you know, who came on, who is a neighbor, he is on the ARB board, but he is not representing the HOA board, Thousand Pines. I just want to be clear on that because I'm on the HOA board. And I'm not representing either. I'm representing just myself and my husband and our property. And the main problem is, is just excessive noise with hurricane impact windows. And again, I know they have to maintain. I know they have children. I know all those things have to take place, sporting events. It's just, we can't enjoy our life.
Can I just ask you a quick question? This is Steve Vance, if you can't see me.
I can see you, actually.
Okay. The things of which you complain are there presently, right? I mean, there's, if we did nothing, if we denied even these applications, you'd still be dealing with those issues. Would your not personal situation be better off if those fields were moved seven hundred feet away, which is what this would ultimately entail? Isn't that, isn't it a good development for you guys?
No, Mr. Vance, it's not. Here's the deal. You're right. Without any of this even being into question, it's been a problem for four to five years. And I've emailed and talked to Mr. Flowers, talked to Mr. Dupree many, many times. Trust me, they're sick of hearing from me. Pleasantly trying to just say, hey, I'm just trying to live here. We have a pool. We can't go in the backyard, can't go in the pool. Everything for us happens in our backyard, which is right there. So bottom line is it's just always going to be. So even if this was, didn't come up for, you know, future land use and rezoning, it's been a problem for about four to five years. And I've let them know that. So probably my guess is, and it's just a guess, is there's a lot of manpower behind this. It'll probably go through. We're only one resident, one family. My guess is we will probably have to move because it's just not tolerable for us to live here anymore like this.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Was there anyone else from the public who wished to be heard, Mr. Roach?
Mr. Chair, no one else has identified interest in making public comment, no.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Nichols, I'll give you an opportunity to respond to what we heard.
Yeah, I, and I'd like, I'd like Pastor Flowers to comment if he can on the, on the landscaping and then also on security at the main entrance. And whether that's something that we could, we could help with and then also some type of schedule for the landscaping.
I would like if, if possible, among the things he addressed, specifically the concerns they raised.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. First, let's speak towards the landscaping. I actually have a landscaping schedule. We, we hire landscaping through Palm Beach County Landscaping. So they come four times a week, or four times a month, once a week to do the main property. And they come through within the hours of operation and, and daily use. We did make some concessions. There are some things that I believe Ms. McMaster's is referring to. So we blow off our campus every morning. Our staff blows off the campus every morning because of some of our older buildings in a way that the buildings drain water. It fills up our underground drainage system, so they blow off all the sidewalks to make sure that stuff doesn't fill up and we don't have drainage issues. So we made some concessions because of Ms. McMaster's complaints about the noise. And so we don't blow off on her side of the property during the week now. That's maybe why it's gotten better. Because of some of the, the issues that have arose there. As far as the kids playing, yes, there's kids that play on the sports fields. Yes, they do have games there. Yes, we do have horns that sound for lightning.
What about the, is, is there anything that we can do at the entry area to help avoid, you know, folks driving back there and drinking and doing whatever? I mean, is there a way to?
Other, I think the, the best possible solution for that is to contact. Right now, we're currently under PBSO, so just have them check through, drive through at night, which we do occasionally.
So it's, it sounds like just to kind of wrap this item up in terms of the, the, the issues is we, is we have the noise. The noises really seems to be the issue. And I think moving the kids in the fields, like we said, over seven hundred feet away, I think is going to reduce that significantly and, and pretty much eliminate it. So if, based on the new maintenance schedule for the, the blowing off of the, the campus and the kids shifting with the fields, I think I'm hoping that that should be acceptable to Ms. McMaster's as we move forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nichols. I would ask the fellow board members, any further questions of either staff or the applicant before we take it under consideration? And if not, let's bring it to the board. Does anyone have any objections to the relief being asked today? You know, if I could just briefly speak to the McMaster's concerns, these concerns, I'm sure are very real and they're kind of independent of what's coming before us today. If we were to deny these requests, those problems will persist. It seems to me that, that one of the primary results of this will be the removal of the, the fields further away from their home. So that may improve it. And to the McMaster's, if they're listening, I would say we are only a recommending board. So you'll still have an opportunity to raise these concerns to the city commission. To the applicant, I would say, please see what can be done to address those concerns, you know, that can be reasonably done. Does anyone else have any other comments besides the ones I shared?
Steve, I think I, yeah, I support your comment. And I think that when, when they're in for site plan approval, we just have to be cognizant of the, the residential neighborhoods to the west when they're in for final site plan. And maybe, you know, the city's going to hang a little bit of a, of a stick over them and say, you gotta add a landscape buffer, you gotta add lighting control, you gotta add some kind of mitigation in the context of the parking and the broader site plan. But for this, what we're doing today, none of this, none of this, I hate to say it, but it's not relevant to the decision we're making today.
So any other comments? And if not, look for a motion. I think we had to make three separate motions. Is that right, Mr. Thomas? Hearing no objection, I think we'll do a separate ones. So who will make the motions?
I'll move a thorough, Mr. Chairman, of case eighteen twenty-four.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I have a second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Pivka, oh.
Thank you.
We have two more to pass for you, sir.
Move approval of case eighteen twenty-four A with the two conditions. Based on the findings that the petition meets at least one of the five future land use amendment standards found in the future land use element policy one, one, seven of the city's comprehensive plan.
That's, that's one, one, five. There's a typo in the planning board report at that.
Peter knew that. He was testing you. Go ahead, Peter. It worked.
One, one, five.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I have a second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
We're on the third one, eighteen twenty-four B. Based on the findings that the petition meets all eight zoning standards found in section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second?
I have a second on that one as well.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you, guys. All right. Next on our agenda, planning board case number sixteen ninety-three H.
Mr. Chair, just give me one second.
Of course.
Okay, that should be everybody.
All right. Would anyone who plans to speak or offer testimony, please raise your right hand? Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
I do.
Okay, let us hear then from the applicant.
Joni, I think you need to be unmuted if you're presenting.
There we go. We find it helpful that way.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay. I'm Joni Reitman with Urban Design Studio on behalf of the applicant. I don't know if Robert Singer is, is signed in. He is representing ownership. And Chris Hagan is also on the line in regards to traffic and parking. And Lindsay Jean Lewis is here with me as well, another associate here from the firm. And we're here tonight to talk to you about Casimara, major amendment. The address is thirty-one eleven South Dixie. It was formerly known as Prospect Place. For a greater context to where the property is located, it is on the west side of Dixie Highway between I ninety-five Dixie and south of Belzeder Road. It's located actually at the northwest corner of Hampton Road in South Dixie. There are commercial uses to the north, including, do you want to go back quickly? Including Rich's Ice Cream. And then to the north of that, on the top of your screen, you'll see the Palm Beach Post facility that, that the board was talking about earlier that's currently under redevelopment as well. This shows you a historical picture of the land area that Casimara currently occupies. It's a site of a former Sears building that was converted to office space for years, a lot of parking out front. And this shows you what you will see today as you drive by. This view is from Dixie Highway looking into the site from the main entry. To the left of the picture is one of the three mixed use buildings that are sighted on Dixie Highway. The taller building in the rear is one of the pure residential buildings. And then you can also see the clubhouse there on the right-hand side of the photo. So the reason we're here before you tonight is to request a major planned development amendment. And it is specifically to amend a condition of approval that was contained in the approving resolution. That would allow for the conversion of non-residential uses over time via the minor amendment process. I'll get that into that in a little bit more detail in a bit. And we are also amending the parking waiver that was previously approved as part of that resolution to increase the waiver amount from thirty to forty-nine spaces. We do currently have a minor amendment in process as well. The project is nearing completion. They're taking care of a few loose ends, including the depiction of the public art that will be provided at the intersection of Hampton and Dixie. That's already been to the city commission and approved. Okay, just a little bit of history. The last actions that were taken by the city commission were in September of twenty eighteen. Rezone the overall parcel. It's a little bit more than nine acres in size from GC to commercial plan development and approve the development regulations and the waivers associated for the, with the CPD. The specific condition we are amending is condition two of the resolution that. that currently reads that uses within the 3111 South Dixie CPD shall be limited of those uses specified in Exhibit G, which is attached to the resolution. Humilitatively, the restaurant uses within the CPD shall not exceed a total of 4,500 square feet in gross area. We're proposing to amend that condition as a reflection of the market and also a reflection of what we think will help this project provide the more urban environment along Dixie Highway. They're getting a lot of youth interest from restaurant uses. And by changing the condition, it'll allow us over time as tenants come and go in the facility to be within a threshold established, acceptable by the city in regards to the amount of square footage, but we would be able to do it administratively over time. So into that effect, we're proposing to say that the commercial uses allowed within the non-residential square footage may be reallocated over time with a similar approval by the city of a revised traffic equivalency and shared parking study via the minor amendment process. No increase in the amount of required parking above the waiver granted or traffic is allowed without a major amendment to the CPD. So we are eliminating that 4,500 square foot cap that's currently in the condition. This just shows you the increase that we are also requesting from 30 spaces to 49 to allow that ultimate maximum amount of 7,500 square foot of restaurant space. This is supported by a Kimley Horn parking study prepared by Chris Hagan, reviewed by your staff and deemed acceptable. This just goes into a little bit more background in regards to the parking study that was submitted. Per the study, there's 625 spaces required and we're providing 576, which does result in that 49 space waiver. Just to go over the residential demand that Chris Hagan had outlined in the traffic parking study. The city's parking regulations for apartments are fairly stringent. And unlike those in the DMP, we are not in the downtown master plan. So we actually require 585 spaces. But the parking study indicated that really we only need 456. So that left a balance of 99 to 129 spaces that would be available above what would actually be utilized. And then in the non-residential section, it also resulted in a peak demand of only 75 spaces for the non-residential uses during the hours of 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. To give you an idea of the way the site plan is laid out, this depicts a gate system where the three mixed-use buildings along Dixie Highway are open to the public, as is the parking in that area. 123 non-gated spaces are provided, as well as 27 spaces on Dixie Highway. So in regards to that, staff has created some conditions of approval and basically we are agreeing to reserve 71 spaces of 123 spaces outside the gate, set aside during the peak hour demand established in the parking study of 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Those spaces, plus the additional 27 on-street, will allow the parking demand to be met during that timeframe. And the reserved spaces to be designated is subject to review and administrative approval by the Planning Division.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's just it.
This is the approved site plan. And then this plan reflects some changes associated with the artwork. And this is a better graphic here to show you what we're talking about. Okay, these two spaces that you see, two buildings you see here are the north and the middle building. And what we're proposing, they actually have a user already for that south end cap on the central building for a coffee shop, a little over 2,400 square feet. And that's going to provide for 200 square feet of outdoor dining associated with that use. And then the south end of the north building end cap is also a very similar sized restaurant use, different type of restaurant that would provide for 500 square feet of outdoor dining. And this allows for the potential for another 1,730 square foot restaurant with 200 square feet of outdoor dining area at the north end of that north building. That's situated closer to the plaza area where the artwork's going to be. And we feel that this outdoor dining area and these uses and the ability to market to these type of users will actually create the urban environment and the walkability. It'll allow people in the neighborhood to walk there. I think it's going to be a really good improvement to activate the space. This kind of shows you the existing paved areas associated with the locations of the outdoor dining. Again, the left-hand side of your screen is that northeast corner, southeast corner of the site. You see the fountain there. And then to the left of the fountain, a little bit behind those palm trees, is where the new artwork is going to go. The middle picture is the 500 square foot dining area associated with that other end cap. And then the far right photo is under construction, but that is where the 200 square feet would be. So I mentioned, and it is in your staff report, the conditions of approval that staff is proposing in regards to the 71 spaces on-site outside the gate being used for patrons and employees of the non-residential uses during those hours of operation between 11:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Signing or markings to designate these spaces will be determined and implemented by the owner, subject to the review and approval by the Planning Division. The number of spaces designated may be adjusted over time administratively by the Planning Division based on the use and/or operating hours of commercial tenants if they change in the future. There are waiver standards that need to be addressed in regards to the parking waivers requested. We are in line with all of those. We are only a 7.8% reduction to the parking based on where 30% could be permitted. We are obviously providing for an urban environment, including a walkable neighborhood scale mixed-use project. A parking study has been provided, as well as a traffic study by Kimley Horn regarding the empirical data required. And the requirement for on-street parking is also being met for the 27 spaces on Dixie Highway. Just going over the major amendment standards. We're also consistent with all those. And that is the conclusion of our presentation. We're available for any questions. And again, Chris Hagan is here as well. If you have any specific questions regarding either the parking study or the traffic equivalency.
All right, any questions of the applicant? Peter?
Joni, I had a question about the street parking. Wasn't that in the original site plan to begin with?
Yes, the 27 spaces?
Right.
Yes, it was included as part of the approval.
Okay.
All right, any other questions of the applicant? And if not, let's hear from staff. Mr. Roach?
Good evening. Thank you for the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. I believe the applicant really covered everything in their presentation, so I'm not going to go through it all. Just to put on the record, the staff is recommending approval of the application subject to the condition contained in the staff report and mentioned by the applicant. We feel that it does comply with section 94-32, as well as the parking waiver standards in 207. Excuse me. And again, that is subject to the condition with regards to the reservation of the spaces. The one thing I want to emphasize is that we really analyzed the parking situation and the number of spaces on-site. We feel like what they have sufficiently covers the actual demand of the residential requirements. And that's actually where they have a lot of flexibility and that they could probably get away with less parking when it comes to the residential. The problem becoming the commercial is a little more demanding. And then there's the aspect of there's some parking inside the gates, some parking outside the gates, making sure that residents aren't parking in commercial spaces. You know, we wanted to make sure everybody's demand is being satisfied at the time in which it's needed. And so that's the reason we're putting in there that the 71 spaces on their site, and again, that's in addition to the 27 on-street parking spaces, so 98, would be reserved for the non-residential use at the peak times in which that non-residential use needs the parking. Outside those peak times, then residents, you know, overnight hours or what have you, the residents could park in those spaces. But we just wanted to make sure that, you know, during that noon time, afternoon, evening window, that eight-hour window of 11 to 7, that there was sufficient parking for the non-residential uses. And so that's the basis of the condition. And that's the reason we're recommending approval subject to that condition. So that concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? John, I have a question. Why did we limit the restaurant parking to begin with? And what's changed in your mind?
So the original limitation was put in place for the basis of the parking, the number of spaces. Restaurants require a significantly greater number of spaces than a general retail space. So if they just come in and designated it all as retail and parked it at $1 per $250, and then come back and propose restaurant across the entire development, which requires one space per 100 square feet, it would have had a significant deficiency in the number of spaces required. And we didn't go through the process of fully analyzing how much commercial was going to be restaurant, how much was going to be retail, office, and so forth. We feel like we have a better idea in terms of how things are being leased right now, the demand of those residential units, how much demand is on the actual parking that's on the site. And we feel like we can have that flexibility. So anytime that there's a variation in the square footage allocation, so if they want to increase the amount of restaurant, you know, two years from now, they can do that administratively, but they got to go through the whole process again and doing the shared parking study, the traffic study, and show that they still have sufficient parking to do that. If they don't, then that's an issue that would need to be addressed. So we're building in, while we're getting rid of the square footage limitation, we're building in an alternative process that would allow us to review it and have those safeguards correct.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? John, do we have anyone from the public who wishes to be heard?
Mr. Chair, no one has identified interest in public comment on the side of.
All right, then we'll bring them back to the board. First, does anyone have any additional questions of staff or the applicant? And if not, does anyone have concerns about the application? I will say this. Oh, go ahead, John, you first.
No, I wanted to say that I didn't have any objections to it. I really appreciated the exhibit that showed three smaller neighborhood-scale restaurants. I think that breaking the restaurant space up will, you know, you'll see more of the residents using those on a regular basis. You'll see more foot traffic. I was a little concerned about going to 7,500 square feet, thinking that perhaps it would be one restaurant where we would get into a valet situation and it would maybe with a meeting room and that sort of thing. And that becoming more of a destination-type of facility generating a greater parking demand than the smaller community scale. So I don't have any objection to it. I think the idea of the smaller spaces as presented today, you know, I think that's really well-designed to support the needs of the residents.
Any additional comments? I will make one. I have some misgivings about the restaurants, but I have to tell you, it is a very handsome project. I don't know if any of you had a chance to see it. It's really good-looking. They did a wonderful job and that caused me to want to give them the benefit of any doubt. When you consider what they replaced, it's even more impressive. So it's one of the best-looking projects I've seen in a while. So I congratulate them for that and I'll be supporting this. Any other comments? And if not, we'll look for a motion. You guys, you know, part of this, I'm not allowed to make the motion because I'm presiding. So I need one of you to come forward with it, besides good old Peter, who's always there. Come on, guys, let's enthusiastically make a motion here. Someone help me out.
I'll do it.
Deborah?
Yeah, I move for approval of Planning Board case 1693H.
And when Deborah makes a motion, who's here going to fight it? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Thomas just wants to emphasize that that does include the increase of the parking waiver as part of that motion.
You accept that clarification?
Accept that.
Okay, and is it second as well?
Second.
Okay, then in which case, thank you for that clarification. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, I think we're done on the agenda items. It brings us to new business, other business, unfinished business. Does anyone have anything more? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.